All right, I now call to order the July 8th, 2025 Board of Trustees Meeting, the time being 6:30 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Wiegand?
Here.
Trustee Cannon?
Here.
Trustee Daly?
Present.
Trustee Moyer? Trustee Teetz?
Here.
Mayor Pretim Mason?
Here.
Mayor Shosse? Mayor Pretim, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. I do have one amendment to the agenda this evening. I think there's kind of a consensus that we want to move the, this evening's work session to postpone till later date. I believe that's going to be August 12th.
A date to be determined.
Date to be determined, so thank you. Any other amendments to the agenda this evening? Seeing none, any conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none, all right. Now's the time for public comment. Members of the public who wish to comment on non-agenda items, please sign in on the sheet behind the podium and state your name clearly into the microphone. Each speaker will have three minutes to provide comments. Seeing no comments, we'll go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. Will Clerk please read the title of the items on the consent agenda?
June 10th, 2025 meeting minutes and June 17th, 2025 meeting minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. Do I hear a motion on this item?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Ms. Clerk, roll call, please.
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee, Mayor Pretim Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Pretim, that motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk, and we'll go ahead and move on to our only action item this evening. Ms. Clerk, can you please read the title of item D1?
Boys and Girls Club of Laramie County Funding Request.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. I have Rachel Redman here, Allison Heinz, and Zach Heath. Zach Heath from the Boys and Girls Club of Laramie County will present this item. I wasn't sure if you guys had a presentation as far as that goes, or...
Yes, we have some slides to present.
Okay.
For them to present, and then we'll add them to the packet tomorrow.
Sounds great.
And just Allison tonight, thank you. Yes, sorry, Zach got caught up in club and couldn't make it over in time, so apologies on that.
No worries.
He's been busy this summer, so. Thank you all for having us here. We really appreciate the opportunity. Our Wellington Club is very robust, I think, as you all probably know, and such an integral part of the community. We're really just happy to be a partner with Wellington and the town and all of the families that live here. So thanks for having us. Our mission is to enable all young people, especially those who need us most, to reach their full potential as productive, caring, and responsible citizens. Are you, okay, great, thank you. I don't have the clicker. So a little snapshot of our club in Wellington. We are the most affordable, accessible, out-of-school care opportunity for youth and families across Laramie County, including in Wellington. And so during the school year, we have K through 18 essentially in our Sage Homes Wellington Club. In the summer, because of the high demand, we expand, and this year we're in Rice Elementary as well. So we separate out our older kiddos, so our 6th through 12th. We have at the Sage Homes Wellington Club, and they get a different level of programming than our K through 5 that are over at Rice Elementary. So our program offerings, we do academic support, STEM tutoring, we're getting a grant for that right now, workforce exploration, which is our Summer of Discovery Program, which we're here for tonight, healthy lifestyles, the arts, character building, leadership development, all of those good things. So this summer, our enrollment is, we have 80 youth at the Sage Homes Wellington Club and 120 youth at the Rice Elementary Club. And we're averaging, for the Summer of Discovery Program in the Sage Homes Wellington Club, just over 50 kids a day in that program. So our Summer of Discovery, and this is a photo of Genesis, so she is in the Wellington Club, and she was our 2025 Senior Youth of the Year Award winner for our countywide competition. So she went to Denver in April and competed at the state level. And I have to say, Wellington's doing a heck of a job with their leadership development because our last two years, our Youth of the Year have come from the Sage Homes Wellington Club. So really great things happening. I wish I could give Zach kudos here tonight, but he does a very, very good job. And so this is a quote from Genesis, "When Summer of Discovery was first presented to me, I didn't know what I wanted to be when I grew up. Summer of Discovery has given me the opportunity to explore new interests and learn more about myself." And the program is seven to eight weeks, depending on the school district and how long that program runs. But each week is a different opportunity for career exploration. We partner with 20 local businesses and institutions of higher education to really show kids what's out there, what's available to me after high school, whether that's working in the trades, whether that's going to a two- or a four-year institution for a degree. All of those things are presented to them. We have an entrepreneurship week. We have a construction and architecture week and engineering, all of the things. So it's a really nice opportunity for them to see things that they may not otherwise be exposed to. And this, if you're willing to indulge me, is a quick video. If we can play it, we'll see if it'll... I don't have much faith in AV sometimes, but we'll see. We'll see if it cooperates. And so this is our Summer of Discovery Program in action from last summer. So I was saying to Patty, thank you for indulging the video. I know it's at four minutes, but I think it really gives you an opportunity to see all the facets of the program really in action. So the kiddos last year, I think they were really excited about the Dome project because they got to go to Krispy Kreme, which is the onsite location for the construction. And so they all got free donuts, too, so that was a lot of fun. And then that, where you saw the Wellington Kids, that was our Entrepreneurship Week in it. The capstone is Shark Tank. So they all get up and they present their ideas for a product, and they talk about doing the market research and bringing it to fruition, and what would that take, and what would that look like? And it's a really cool opportunity. So if any are interested in judging that, we're hosting that here in a couple of weeks, so it's a lot of fun. So I think we've got one last slide maybe for you? Maybe two? So yeah, we're engaging about 55 youth every day in the program, hands-on workforce exploration. So you know, this really aligns with your priority around fostering economic vibrancy, and we think that's really important, and a way to really engage in, with our teens and get them to be thinking about what's next and provide them those opportunities to see themselves in different career paths right here in Laramie County. So like I said, we partner with over 20 businesses, always looking for new ones, as James mentioned. And so the opportunity to continue to expand that and just bring new people in, new opportunities in front of our kids, so. Yeah, and so here's our budget specifically for Summer of Discovery in Wellington. It's around $65,000 for the summer. That's largely staffing costs, transportation, which is a partnership with Pooter School District. We take weekly field trips, sometimes more than one a week for this project, for this program, so that those kids can get onsite and really get hands-on experience. We find that to be really valuable. So the majority of that comes from foundations, other grants, individuals, and then we offset that with about 16% of our general operating revenue. So for any of our programs, if their funding isn't specifically designated for that program, then we're supplementing that through general operation funding. So our request for you all is $5,000 to support the Wellington program specifically. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for the presentation, Ms. Heinz. Any questions from the board on this item? I'll start with Trustee Teetz.
Questions or comments?
Neither one's fine.
Either one? I am completely comfortable with extending this funding to this program. Knowing that it will directly impact 55 children in this program is huge. So 18-plus field trips, here it says that you partner with local businesses, agencies. You provide hands-on workforce exploration experiences for youth. So, and if you work with high schoolers, that is detrimental to guaranteeing whether they move on or drop out of high school. So it's a fantastic thing that you are offering. I like the fact that we have requested there be written report required within 60 days, knowing that the program's implemented the taxpayer dollars correctly. We've extended similar support to other organizations here in town. The public benefit that comes in keeping children active and supervised during the summer months, supervision can reduce kinds of property damage in parks, create healthier peer relationships, and build stronger community connections, all of which were part of our criteria with this application process we had put in. The request is an investment with high return in youth engagement, so I'm grateful that you guys are doing this.
Thank you. I just want to say that we're 55, like 50 to 55 is the average daily attendance, but I would say that we touch all 80 of those registered youth. They just don't attend every single day, if that helps.
Thank you, Trustee Teetz. Trustee Cannon?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Cannon. Trustee Wiegand?
I agree with Trustee Teetz on this. You guys are doing a fantastic job. The investment in our youth needs to be done, and you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Wiegand. Trustee Daly?
Last year I got to talk with Dome Construction, as well as several of the youth that were enrolled and participated fully in order to get their gift card at the end of the, at the end of the summer.
They have to participate 80% or more of the sessions, and then they graduate, and there's an incentive, yeah.
Right, exactly. I got to talk to them, and they were really dedicated to the process. Dome Construction was amazed with how professional and just fulfilling on their side the experience was. And Boys and Girls Club is a blessing to Wellington, among many other places, but especially here as our major provider of childhood services. So I love the Boys and Girls Club, but in order to, and extent of that, to expand to these workforce development and opportunities, I think is amazing. So I thank you so much for your investment in Wellington and our youth and everyone here who's participating in that. I think it's so important. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Wellington is a special community, and I say that sincerely. The club here is really unique and very tight-knit, and it's real, it's very cool to see.
Yes, an amazing facility.
Thank you, Trustee Daly. Ms. Heinz, really appreciate the presentation. Obviously, this, you guys have been an excellent partner of the community for a very long time, and we certainly appreciate you guys being here and everything that you do for our youth. Certainly, I support this, and you know, the local partnerships that come out of these things and getting youth out there to see what trades could be in the future and these types of things. I mean, that's very cool stuff. I never had anything like that growing up, so this is nothing but a good thing in my eyes. So moving forward, do I hear a motion on this item?
I move to approve the community grant, I'm sorry.
Public comment.
I apologize, I apologize. Any public comments on this item?
I think everybody knows me, but Darren was Sage Homes, so obviously you know I support the Boys and Girls Club, but I'm trying to figure out the math. I think they're 10,000 plus short. And so I want to throw this out to the board. You got $30,000 in discretionary money. If the board will approve not five, but $10,000, we'll match that, so they have some money in their coffers. Just a thought. So it's a huge impact for the community. It's been great, and we're glad to be involved. So I just want to throw a curveball out to you guys that will match those funds because really, they are short of the 10,240 that they need. So I don't know if that's right or wrong. I didn't ask Cody Byrd, but I figured I'd throw it out now, so.
Yeah, I certainly appreciate the comment, Mr. Roberson. I know in the past, we've given different sums, I think 12,000 and even 25,000 one year. So as far as... Mr. Sapienza, I guess I'm just trying to understand if, sorry. Obviously, we want to entertain some board discussion here, but I'd be curious, there's nothing, as far as the packet goes, that has them binding to do anything here, so I just want to be clear.
You're asking if the packet, the agenda, has given the public adequate notice for what's happening? If you want to change the amount, is that what you're asking, Mayor Pretim?
Well, yeah, that piece, and then I don't know if, geez, I'm not sure if there needs to be some type of separate MOA as far as between Sage and...
This grant funding that is being applied for here is through the board's discretionary fund. So there's...
It's open.
$30,000 is what you say is in there, and if that was in the packet?
Yep.
I'm said it's really, it's up to the board on that. I would, you know, Mr. Roberson has said that he'd do, he'd match those funds so that they had some operating, some money in their coffers. What I'm, if the board were to approve a larger amount, it still would be part of the same grant. We would still require the same reporting at the end of it. It wouldn't, we're not able to just give a blanket donation to the Boys and Girls Club, but $10,000 or any amount that would be within that discretionary fund, you could do as part of this grant. As to the open meetings law requirements, there is an item on the agenda that says funding for a discretionary fund grant to the Boys and Girls Club. So modifying that would be fully appropriate, if desired, but yeah.
Understood. Trustee Cannon?
Darren, I appreciate, appreciate you and everything you've done. You've really helped out the Boys and Girls Club in the past several years, and I've watched the Boys and Girls Club grow. And you being part of that, giving, helping them secure a location and, you know, providing funding for them when needed, I think it's admirable and it's doing a wonderful thing for the youth in our town. The only concern I have about changing the grant amount is, you know, I think a discussion, you know, you can approve the 5,000 now and come back at a subsequent meeting and decide to increase that. That way, we can keep things legal. But I have a question about, you know, we used that money from the discretionary fund last year for the HUG grants, and I'm concerned about, you know, if we reduce that HUG grant amount, which is helping a lot of low-income, you know, residents in their houses to pay for some of their increased water cost. So I think we would, I would feel better if we could evaluate that a little bit and get a report maybe back from staff about that. I mean, I would be all for that, to be honest with you. But we also have other needs that we need to consider as well there, so. And that's, and that's the only hesitation I have.
Well, I appreciate the consideration, so.
Yeah.
Appreciate that comment. Trustee Cannon. Trustee Teetz?
I was actually going to share the same comment, but in that I was going to add, I know our senior center is also struggling right now with transportation costs, and we were discussing allocating funds towards transportation for seniors. I also am super excited because now a lot of new nonprofits are figuring out that any nonprofit can now apply. And I would love to see us be able to assist more than a single nonprofit. I know we have no cosanta squad that is going to be submitting. They took over for Toys for Tots, and I know they're going to be submitting an application there here in Wellington. So I would, I would support it as long as there's funds there, HUG grant covered, senior centers covered, and the possibility of assisting additional nonprofits is on my list to do as well.
Appreciate that. Trustee Teetz, any other comments from the board?
I kind of agree with what they're talking about. Probably, you know, go ahead and approve the 5,000 now, and then we can have additional conversation.
I do want to note that I reached out to the Boys and Girls Club and requested that they apply for this grant, and I'm sure they would have come across it in other ways, too. I did the same for five other nonprofits that are very prominent in our community, just so that they are aware of the community grant opportunities that are available with the town. It is now July. I did this, and as soon as the grant was live on the website and the form was available, this is the only one of the people who I've reached out who have fulfilled and gone through with actually applying for the grant. We are beyond halfway through the year, and we have allocated $30,000 for this specific community grant. And we've also solicited, and, well, in my case, I have solicited people to apply for it, and we've also communicated that the opportunities are there. I feel like this is an incredible opportunity for our town, and not just serves this nonprofit, but actually 80 specific youth in our community. And we have allocated separate money for HUG, so it's not that this is taking directly from that program. I know that we have supplemented it in the past, and I think that will be an option in the future as well. I also have kind of caught up on the senior center transportation items and know about the success of their fundraising that they have done, too. What I'm saying is that we have a community grant available for the purposes that obviously match this, and it matches our strategic plan. We have had one person or one organization apply at this point. We are 50% through the entire year. And I think there's a fantastic opportunity here. So I understand the idea of waiting. I also know that they have taken the initiative and are here, and it will directly be put to use this exact summer. So it's not just granting this money for this actual year. It's actually going to be put into use within the next two months. And I think that this is a vital time that we fund this program and do so with such a huge opportunity. And we're not talking about just an additional $5,000 necessarily. We're actually talking about an impact to the program of $15,000. So I would urge us here to make a decision based on the fact that we already halfway through the year. We have a budgeted amount of $30,000. We're considering using one-third of that, that we do so tonight, and then give that to the Boys and Girls Club to do amazing good throughout our community.
Appreciate the comment, Trustee Daly. Well, I suppose I would, I tend to agree with Trustees Cannon, Trustee Teetz, and Trustee Wiegand in the regard of, I would suggest that we do go ahead and approve the 5,000 tonight. I think what I would like to see from staff is a, just a usage report as far as where the HUG grant is at currently. Ms. Garcia, if you happen to know?
So currently, there's a balance of $2,700 left. So Nick Reedavid and I spoke a little bit today about needing to come to before the Board of Trustees, noting that last year, the board, we authorized up to $40,000. We ended up spending a little over $39,000 last year on the HUG grant. So we are, it was a budget of $12,000. We have $2,700 left. So we will be needing to come to the Board of Trustees to either access funds from the board discretionary fund or other mechanisms. So we will come to you with a couple different options to choose from on how to move forward. As far as the senior van, there's enough funds left. Our portion, the town of Wellington's portion, is to pay for their gas and operations and maintenance and insurance. We have funds, there are enough funds left for gas to cover their fuel needs for the rest of the year, assuming there's no maintenance issues. I mean, it's a, it's a new van, so there should not be any maintenance issues, but there is, we do have enough money left in the Town of Wellington Fund to cover their fuel for the rest of the year.
Understood. Trustee Wiegand?
Question. Will this be on, available even if we delay it by two weeks?
Absolutely, absolutely, guys. We just want to support the Boys and Girls Club and support Wellington and the community.
Beautiful.
We just thought, again, when I did their math, I'm like, well, why didn't they ask for 10? Because they're short. So that was the first thing I said to Allison last night. And I, sorry about the curveball, it's short notice, but, I mean, we're going to match the 5,000 no matter what, but we would like to get some money in the coffers, guys. I mean, this community, it's a huge impact.
Well, we certainly appreciate it, Mr. Roberson. I mean, it's very generous of you to match like that. So I would, I think I would propose that we do go ahead and do the 5,000 a night. I suspect the board is going to want to probably put something towards the HUG fund in addition. So I think we're going to have to come back at that at a later time and determine what that amount is, but I would, I would...
Can we put this on the agenda in two weeks?
To bring this back?
Right, for the additional five at that time.
If there's left to our funds, guys, we'd love to have you guys instead of the Boys and Girls Club, so. Awesome. All right, thanks. Thank you, Darren.
Yeah, that'd be perfect.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Do I hear a motion on this item?
Give me a second.
You want me to read?
Yes, please do.
I move to approve the community grant application in the amount of $5,000 submitted by the Boys and Girls Club of Laramie County with funding to be provided from the Board of Trustees Discretionary Fund.
Second.
Any final comments or direction from the board on this?
I'm grateful that they came forward with the request.
Yes, indeed. Appreciate you guys coming to and applying. So, Ms. Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Teetz?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Mayor Pretim Mason?
Yes.
Mayor Pretim, that motion passes?
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. All right, we'll move on to reports. Any reports from the town attorney this evening?
With the delay of the work session related to bylaws that was going to happen at the end of this meeting, I just want to encourage the board to reach out to me with any questions, comments, anything else related to those between now and whenever we do have that meeting. So it just gives you all a little extra time, and I'm happy to sit down, have lunch, have a phone call, talk about bylaws, so just want to make sure you know I'm available.
Sounds great. Thank you, Mr. Sapienza. Administrator Garcia?
So as a reminder, next week is the Town Hall, starts at 6:00 PM here at the Leaper Center. We'll have water rates and, water rates in Cleveland Avenue happening in these, in these two rooms, and then we'll have the postmaster plan and community center feasibility study opportunity outside. There'll be free popsicles, so please come for free popsicles. opportunity outside. There'll be free popsicles, so please come for free popsicles. This will be, you know, this is really an opportunity for residents to come and provide comments. They'll have an opportunity to look at like the Cleveland Avenue project and, and vote on what type of benches they might like, or lighting fixtures they might like, things like that. So it should be a good time. And then the next week is July 22nd, and we will have a work session starting at 6:00 PM. We'll have your liquor licensing training that was discussed, so that'll be the first hour, six to seven, and then we'll roll into our regular meeting at 7:00 PM. We will go on ahead and make sure that's publicized very well, so that residents are aware of the change in meeting time.
Awesome. Thank you for that update, Administrator Garcia. Definitely want to encourage all of our residents to come out to the Town Hall if you have questions regarding water rates or the construction project that's going to be going on downtown next year. Certainly encourage anybody that's got questions about those things to please, please do come down. We're all very open to just sitting down and chatting and answering any of your questions. Staff communications are in the packet. Any questions from the board on those items? Seeing none, we'll move into board reports. Trustee Teets?
I don't have any reports, as I have been absent for a bit. I do want to say congratulations to the town, town staff, and all of the entities that were involved in the Fourth of July. I have heard nothing but praise about how it was handled, the events that went on, and yeah, so nothing but great news. We've had a few emails as trustees stating that the video before the fireworks show was greatly appreciated, and I think that's fantastic. It's my most favorite part of the Fourth of July. So I just want to say thank you to everyone. I used to help plan this event, so I know how much energy and effort goes into said events. I also want to say thank you to the town for putting all of the signage around for the Town Hall. I have had people reaching out and asking questions related to the Town Hall, and I think the additional signage is catching residents' attention. No, other than that, I don't have anything else.
Awesome. Thank you, trustee Teets. Trustee Cannon?
Nothing. Sorry. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be emailing the board, Patty and others. I've got some surgery scheduled, and I may not be available for some events, so I'll just keep everybody advised of what my schedule is like.
Appreciate that, and good luck with the surgery. So trustee Wiegand?
No report, but I do want to say the fireworks display was awesome. They did over the top again. So it was one neat event, and I could not believe all the people that were coming into town. And this just brings so much commerce here. It's got to be such a positive event, all, you know, citywide. So appreciate it.
Thank you, trustee Wiegand. Trustee Daly?
Fourth of July is my favorite time in town, my favorite day of all days. So I had a wonderful time, too, and I witnessed a lot of people doing so. We were absent or canceled one of our meetings because we were all attending, not all of us, but the biggest number of us that we've ever attended before the Colorado Municipal League Conference, where we learned best practices from across the state, got legislative updates and how they impact our town, among many other things, and great bonding for the board, which I appreciate so much, because I love the people that I work with up here. Kayla says that all the time, but I agree. But it was an amazing experience in Breckenridge, and I wouldn't pass it up ever, because it is so helpful. It is, creates momentum and motivation to make sure that we're serving our town in our best capacity, because sometimes we only see within ourselves and exactly what we're dealing with. It's much more important to see a bigger picture, see outside ourselves, and what's going on the rest of the, in other towns, cities, in the state, in the country, and beyond, to kind of open our minds and eyes to make sure that we are doing the best that we can on behalf of our residents and everyone else that depends on the town of Wellington. So that is where we were when we canceled our meeting, and it was time well spent, and will be poured, the effort and resources will be poured back into our town. So that's what we're doing at Colorado Municipal League in Breckenridge. Other than that, I do want to let everybody know that the cereal concert is next Wednesday in Centennial Park, my favorite place to attend concerts. You bring a box of cereal and $10, and you get into a concert with a major band, that 80s band. It's going to be an amazing event benefiting the Wellington Food Bank, a very important cause, and they have, again, great momentum right now for building out a new facility to serve our community on a daily basis. So this is a huge event. Their goals have become incredibly attainable recently. So events like this will make sure that we have a fed community. I hope that you guys can attend. If you're interested in volunteering, please let me know. I will hook you up with the right people. But it's a fantastic event and a fantastic, just initiative in general. So I hope you guys join me there. I'll be at the ticket counter, desk, table, and I can't wait to see you. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Daly. Yeah, yeah, CML was extra great, extra good this year. I always enjoy the legislative session, because I particularly like watching paint dry. But it's always good to know what our Colorado General Assembly is doing and those things that are going to roll downhill that affect us municipalities. So definitely was a great learning experience up there this year, and it was great to spend time with the fellow trustees here. So also just wanted to thank everybody, the Fourth of July, holy smokes, this town really knows how to put, put on a Fourth of July. I mean, between the parade, the car show, the vendors, the band, the fireworks. So I just want to thank our Parks and Rec staff, all of staff, really, LCSO, obviously, for keeping our community safe, and just excellent, excellent show this year. So look forward to next time. So other than that, I have no other board reports this evening. We do have an executive session we're going to roll into. So Ms. Clerk, can you please read the title for item F1?
For the purpose of determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations and/or instructing negotiators pursuant to 24-6-402 for ECRS and for the purpose of receiving legal advice pursuant to 24-6-402 for BCRS regarding water resource acquisition as required by CRS 24-6-402 to D.52A and to E. The executive session proceedings will be electronically recorded, and the record will be preserved for 90 days through October 6, 2025.
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. Do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
Move to enter into executive session.
A second?
Ms. Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Trustee Daly?
Yes.
Trustee Teets?
Yes.
Trustee Wiegand?
Yes.
Trustee Cannon?
Yes.
Mayor Pretten Mason?
Yes.
And Mayor Pretten, that motion passes?
Thank you, Ms. Clerk. For the public, the board is now going to enter executive session. Members of the public in person, please go ahead and exit the room here, and all Zoom users will be sent, well, actually, I apologize, we don't have a work session after this, this evening, so the Zoom meeting will be closed out at this time. And we'll take a quick five-minute recess while we get everything ready to go here.